We're going to call the work session to order here. Welcome. The first item on our work session is the Fairhope Public Schools Commission.
Yes. Great. Yeah. Hey, guys.
Hi. Hello, Amy.
How are you all?
Wonderful. How are you?
Great. So I think you all have the packet of data. Okay. So the goal for the Fairhope feeder pattern has always been since the three-mill tax overlay was passed for us to become top five, ranked in the top five in the state and the school system. So these numbers that we put together, we're kind of calling it our report card, and we're going to present it to you all annually so that you see where we stand as a feeder pattern educationally. So the first tab are the elementary schools. We actually put the elementary schools all together. So this is the three of them. So are you looking, Jack? I see your face. Okay.
My face is because my computer's not bringing it up.
Okay, okay. I think there's a printed copy for you two. But basically, overall...
I have a printed copy.
He has.
Okay.
I'll have it. It's...
I'll just talk you through it. So overall, our proficiency percentages are really good. We're moving up in both English, language arts, math, and science. So there is progress from year to year, which is what we're looking to see. Also, our elementary schools are all outperforming the other schools in the county and the state. So those are other things we want you to see. Couple of other things that the principals wanted to mention for the elementary schools. If you scroll down to the bottom, or if you look down to the bottom, it shows you the additional funding that they've used for the past three years. So they've been buying math instructional materials, reading, behavioral instruction materials. They've been putting the money into professional development to try to help sharpen the saw of our teachers. They put a lot of money into technology and steam instruction materials. So that's where we stand elementary-wise. The next tab is the middle school. Want to give a shout-out to our middle school. I mentioned the goal is to be one of the top five. The middle school is the closest ranked number six in the state right now. So they have done a phenomenal job pouring the money where it needs to go and really raising that bar. And certainly Angie Hall would also give credit to the elementary principals for this. If you look at their numbers, once again, Fairhope Middle School is clearly outperforming the county and most places in the state. And you can look at the proficiency percentages. That's a really hard thing to say. They've improved from year over year. So you can look at seven, eight for English, math, and science, and our numbers continue to go up. And then Angie is actually, or Ms. Hall is putting her additional funding, she noticed there's a gap with blackmailed students for their academic progress. So she's pouring a lot of additional funding into that demographic to try to make sure that she brings all of her students up to that proficiency level. And then the high school, we're currently ranked number 10th in the state. And you can look, the way that they're looking at their numbers, their proficiencies are based on their ACT score. And then over to the right, you can look at the AP student scores. One of the things that they've tried to do is really pour money into making sure that if you take an AP class, that you actually pass the test so that you get that college credit. So you can see that those scores are improving as well. Fairhope High School outperforms the county and the state in English, math, reading, and science, and all of our composite scores continue to improve. Fairhope High School has actually invested money into a lot of additional programs to really try to reach all the students. They've started the agro-science program. They've used some of the three-mill funding for the steam program. They've hired additional social workers at the high school level to try to help with mental health issues. They poured money into the ACT. They were actually the first school in the county to pour funding, and that came from the three-mill tax overlay for the security, the additional security. The county is now starting to fund that across the board. So Fairhope High School and middle school is going to be getting a credit back for the funding that we provided as a community. You know, they've done some things like update the black box, poured more money into the piano lab, and then also construction for a special needs playground. So that was as fast as I could go to get all the information. Did not take up too much time.
That was pretty impressive. So first off, thank you. Counsel, questions?
I have one quick question.
Go ahead.
And they are impressive, and I'm really impressed with the middle school and with all of the schools, but that one especially stands out as number six.
Yeah, it does.
On the high school, it says ACT proficiency percentages. Is that just a copy and paste error? Are those actual ACT averages instead of percentages?
No, those are percentages.
Those are scores or something?
I don't think so. There were percentages.
They're suspiciously similar to ACT scores, so...
I think they're scores. I think they're scores.
I'll double-check that, Jack.
Okay.
Because I thought that we were putting in percentages, and actually Mr. Cardwell was calling them out, and I was typing.
Okay.
So I'll double-check that and get back to you on that.
Okay.
They do look like scores, but I don't think they are because I actually think the state's scores are lower than that, if you want to know the truth.
Average.
Which is, you know...
Yeah.
Yeah, but the proficiencies, I don't know what the percentages, you know, if you look at the high school percentages compared to the middle school percentages, they don't really align with the...
Yeah.
With those percentages.
PJ thinks they're the scores, so...
I think he put in scores.
So I'll double-check that. I'll send you...
I think those are average scores.
Yeah.
Okay.
Got to look at my own children's grades in here to see.
Yeah, those are average scores.
What I need to do when I get home.
Those are average scores, which is not bad.
Okay, that's, you know, math seems...
We're averaging like a nineteen or twenty. And yeah, nineteen or twenty, you know, that's the average.
Well, across the board, math is a struggle, even starting at the elementary level, if you look. And our principals have discussed, you know, they're pouring more money into hire more coaches for math and science. You know, historically, they were really investing in English and literature, and those scores have come up tremendously, but there's still a gap. So we're doing a great job, I think, as a school system. They're improving, but we still have a long way to go. We're not in the top five yet. We're getting there.
Look, improvement, you know, I think when we, since I got on council, we talked about appropriations for things. I think the, you know, and I think we've had many discussions about this and how to measure this, but I think this is the only way to truly measure what's going on. And I mean, and every class is different, every group of children are different, but showing a steady improvement really helps.
This is, yeah, I mean, this is just the beginning. I mean, this is on the heels of two years of kind of chaos as well, so...
Entropy, entropy.
Yeah.
Control of chaos.
Yeah, yeah, something like that. And so I think year after year, we're going to get better at kind of nailing this data down.
Well, I mean, I think this is, I think this is great. I'm glad to see that they are what they are. I'm glad to see improvement. I'm glad to see where we are in the county and in the state. That's encouraging for sure.
I think what's most important and what we were trying to show, as I am a liaison for that commission, is really put out in the public to show our worth or the worth of the three-mill tax that everybody's so proudly voting for, and where it's going and how it's going, and how it actually takes some of the burden off the city as well. We didn't show all those numbers, but you will see that a lot of the burden that the city had as far as funds for our feeder pattern schools are pretty much alleviated with the help of our lovely community and the fellowship that we have for our kids. And so instead of just taking that for granted, we wanted to put something together so that we have a visual, so everybody can understand and talk down like a third grader, and present it for the average person as the newspaper used to do, so everybody know where the funds are going and how they're helping our children.
I don't like how you looked at me when you said third grader, but...
Yeah, you know, I tend to look at you on issues like that.
Counsel, I was also going to let you know that I did ask the Education Commission to be part of the State of the City so they could set up a booth that night and help educate the public of, you know, where their tax dollars are going. I think it's a good opportunity for them to be there and share this data with our general public because we get, you know, a great turnout at that event, so I'm hopeful that they're going to do that, and we'll be there.
We can bring additional data, and I'll certainly make sure that we answer that question, but we're trying to simplify it because there's so much information that it can be really overwhelming. So we just try to come up with a report card that we can build on year after year, and then we can track.
Yeah.
You good?
Yeah, I would like to point out that the third graders might be offended because they were in the 77th and 67th percentile, so just make sure you know.
They're doing well. They're doing well.
I'm going to go to fourth grade.
Yeah. Fourth grade did struggle a little bit.
I won't continue to pick on the third graders. I'll raise it far a little bit because I tend to pick on the third graders.
Anybody got anything else, guys?
I was just going to just comment also that, you know, it looks like the goals have shifted. There was a time when we wanted to be in the top 10, so I'm hearing we want to be in the top five. I remember that we were, I want to say Fairhope hasn't been all that long ago, was ranked 15th, I believe, in the state, and that's certainly not a bad position to be in, but 10th is a lot better, and you know, if we make the top five, are, you know, are we still the only, I believe that the top 10 were all city-run school systems and not, there weren't any county-run school systems in the top 10. So that's a...
That still holds true, Jack.
...Board of Education as well to have a high school in the top 10.
And middle school, it's number six.
Yeah.
Right.
It's all in perspective.
Yeah, yeah. It's not like...
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
All right. So number two is off the work session.
They're only here in January.
Okay. All right. Number three, Krebs, and our update on the water line.
While they're making their way up, I had talked to the folks from Krebs and also Jason and thought this would be a good, a good time to update the council on what's going on with our water system as we, you know, approach the new year and just look at some of the improvements that we're making and how that's going to impact capacity and some things that we need to continue to do. So I thought this was a good time, so that's what they're here for tonight. Thank y'all for being here, Ken.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you all for your time. My name's Caleb Leach. Mark Smith is here with me today. Again, we're just going to go through kind of some projects we've been working on and what we're seeing as upcoming future projects and future needs. Just overview of what we're going to go through, and I've used the term discussion here. At any point, please, preferred, we talk about it as we move along, so please stop me if you have any questions. Tell you a little bit about Krebs, overview of the existing water system, an update on the water system improvements that are currently being constructed and bid or in design. Talk to you about why water system planning is important, typical water supply planning practices. Talk a little bit about hydraulic modeling and historical water demands, projected water demands, and really what's next for the city. A little bit about Krebs, we're almost 100 years old. To my knowledge, we're, I think, we're the second oldest engineering firm in the state. Our primary focus is water and wastewater engineering. We pride ourselves on being a relationship company. I think we have average relationships going back over 30 years, and we're 100% employee-owned. We have offices in Birmingham, Montgomery, and Noonan, Georgia. A little bit about your water system, it's a decentralized system. Instead of a centralized system, where a centralized system would be defined as a larger water plant that has larger pipes leaving and pushing water out into the distribution system. Whereas your system, you have 10 water supply wells, and that total capacity of raw water is 11 NGD, five treatment facilities. So you have some water treatment facilities that have multiple wells there. Your total treatment capacity today is eight and a half NGD, and that difference between raw water and treated water is mainly due to distribution system, smaller pipes and smaller pump stations that can't pump as much as the wells can produce into the system. And again, going back to the decentralized system, it can be defined by smaller distribution pipes, and thought it was a good note to say that 85% of the distribution piping is eight inches or smaller. A little bit about project update here. This is a site plan of water treatment plant number three, and we are currently hope to have the capacity test completed by the end of the year for well number 11. That was part of this project, but we bid it separately to, because it was a different type contract. We were looking for a well driller. The improvements here, the bid's been awarded to the Krill Company, contracts have been executed, and work began on 12/5. So they've started, as of last week, unloading material. That total contract amount, roughly $7.6 million. Important to point out, the current capacity here, treatment capacity is 1.5 NGD, and once this project is completed, we're gaining some additional capacity because of, from a well there and distribution improvements. This is one of those places that has a big delta between what can be pumped out of the ground and what can be pumped into the system. So the new treatment capacity will be 2,500 gallons per minute or 3.6 NGD. That project is estimated completion date of summer, prior to summer 2024. Supply chain issues, we should note, the electrical gear for this project has a 52-week lead time. Flange ductal iron pipe is six to eight months right now. The Krill Company, I think we are currently at, on submittal number 45, which, to put that in perspective, we're probably, they've probably got in 70 or 80% of their submittals already. So they're working diligently to get everything approved and get it released, and city staff is working as well. We've got Baldwin EMC, we're trying to get some answers from them to help release this electrical gear and call in contact. So everybody's working diligently to try to get this project moving forward. The total build-out capacity, as this sits right here with some, we've got a spot for a spare pump, will be 6 NGD. So with this project, to get that water out into the system, there's a couple of distribution improvements. The main one and the most important project, 24-inch water transmission main going to the north, which will be to the left-hand side here, and that project's been awarded to Hemp Hill Construction. The design engineer emailed me this morning, said contracts have been executed by the contractor, and you should be getting them in the next week or two for final execution. And that contract amount's roughly 6.5 NGD, and there is a 12-inch project to the south, and it's currently in design, and that estimated project cost is $900,000. Importance here, more demands to the north, we really, that 24-inch is critical, and it, project completion date prior to summer 2024, we think the goal is for water treatment plant number three and 24-inch to coincide roughly at the same completion date.
So 11 and three are together, correct? Well number 11, treatment plant number three.
That's correct.
All right, just a classification.
So you have well number three, well 10, and then you'll have well 11 at that site. That's the one that's, capacity test should be completed by the end of the year. So talk a little bit about why water supply planning is important. As the city in our eyes has kind of moved from a smaller system to a medium-sized system, there's, you know, and the growth here has been, you've seen a lot of growth. It ensures that Fairhope has the water supply it needs, enables the city to prioritize water supply improvements, helps with budgeting, and improves the water system reliability and redundancy. There's also a kind of a buzz term that I think came from ADM, risk and resiliency. There's analysis out there, and that kind of goes hand in hand with what we're trying to say right there. And a lot of times, it's required for funding through SRF, bonding also, and ADM approval. And so some typical practices of water system planning, I think it's important to point out these first four right here, and we're going to get into some of this, the city has done. So we review the historical population and water usage data, evaluate demand growth and population growth, identify areas of future development, develop a water conservation plan, and monitor water loss. Both of those things are being done. We're going to talk a little bit more about hydraulic modeling, and then also talk about planning horizons, short-term, zero to five years, and that's not, that's not always reactionary. That's a lot of, that can also be when you need to take a well out of service, you need to plan for that, so you got to have that additional capacity built in somewhere to take a well down and rehab a motor or a pump bowl. Intermediate, five to 10 years. We like to see a 10-year capital improvements projects plan, and really, the idea there is if you only plan for five years, you're going to constantly be planning. If you think about how long it takes to start a project and develop it, you know, it's two to three years. And also, these go short-term and immediate go hand in hand, and a great example of this is we did a 10-year plan roughly 12 years ago, and everybody thought there's big developments were coming to the north side of the system, big industrial park. Well, eight years later, Toyota Mazda comes, and it's on the south end, and so now all the developments coming, this is North Alabama, is coming to a different section. Well, instead of it being a big reaction, we got to do something, it's a pivot. So they had money budgeted for it, and, but it's just, it changed where we did these improvements. My point in saying that is it is a crystal ball to look 10 years ahead in some ways, but in some ways, it's, we think it's the right thing to do. When things change in your zero to five, you've planned for it, it's just you got to move it somewhere else. And 20 years, long-term plan, I think that 24-inch line we're talking about is a great example of why you look that far ahead from a standpoint of, that's a 50- to 75-year asset you're putting in the ground with that 24-inch ductal iron line. So we don't want to undersize it. We want to look and make sure, you know, we designed that plant for 6 NGD, but if we find a bigger well, there's plenty of real estate there that the city owns that we could, you know, add on to that and make it an 8 NGD plant. So that's just one of the reasons you look that far. In some states, for funding, require a 50-year plan, and that's really in Georgia.
Yeah.
And that's where we see that 50-year plan.
Okay. Yes?
You said ask, is that coming up?
Yeah, yeah.
So on that site, you said there's room for additional wells. Would that just be literally just the pumps and the drilling and the piping? It's not, you're going in the same aquifer there.
Well, that's a good point. So well 11 is into the same aquifer that's there, and so we're working with hydrogeologist, and his goal is 400 feet apart. And one of the things that we're going to look at in the future, in the near future, is acquiring a little bit of property maybe 1,000 foot from the site and putting a well into that aquifer because we, you know, we're at 3.6, what's in construction now, but if we get another million gallons out of that same aquifer, and in talking with a hydrogeologist, he feels like, you know, that's something we can do.
So you could go to a different aquifer.
Yes.
They're that close together? I kind of pictured these things covering miles and miles and miles.
Yeah, so we, and we actually tested a deeper aquifer right there. So we've got one at about 200 feet, which is the one that produces high-quality water. We tested one at 400 feet. It's got a lot of capacity, but it's got high iron and manganese, so we would have to treat for that. We can do it, we've got budget numbers on doing that, but in, you know, instead of putting in some kind of pressure filter, we'd like to investigate a well into that same aquifer just further away, maybe off-site. When I say there's room for expansion, there's room for expansion of the treatment facilities. We've got, we boxed out area for another, what we call a tray aerator, and a clear well to get contact time, to get disinfection. So the idea there was to give more of a centralized treatment. So once this is up and running, this will be your largest treatment facility, and then we can expand on that moving forward. And so typically, once you do this, you develop a water system master plan that'll include a capital improvements projects plan, and that could be anything from a technical memorandum or a four-inch binder. It's really how much detail and does the city want to go into. We've done all different reports, I guess, of a final master plan. Talk a little bit about hydraulic modeling. I've got some examples, but what can it do? It can allow you to evaluate the city's ability to provide fire flow for a development, evaluate the same thing, water pressure for a development or an existing development, troubleshoot low-pressure complaints, low-flow complaints. It helps with water quality analysis. We can do tracer studies and see what water's going where, and that's important when you have a decentralized system because you've got a lot of different water getting pumped into the system from different directions. You can all, and I've got an example of this, evaluate the impacts of, from pending and proposed developments and growth, and also identify the improvements needed for development and growth. Evaluate future wells and other sources, and it's also a useful tool in sizing and locating pipelines and storage tanks.
So on that hydraulic model, you're saying basically, we believe between this point and this point, there's a potential to have X commercial sites and X residential sites, and we would need this much pressure to supply that, this much volume, this much pressure to supply that, and that would impact our pressure downstream of...
That's exactly right. So when you have a...
You had to put in some hypotheticals to model that, right, for future growth?
Yeah, it's a computer model. That's right. So the way we do, the way we do that, calibrated hydraulic model, is we take a snapshot of a 24-hour period of your system, so we get tank data, we'll put pressure recorders, at least 10 out in the system, maybe 20, we've got a bunch. And so we have your hydraulic model, we look at the demands for that day. So there's multiple ways to do that, but we plug in the demands for that day, and then we look at real world, what happened to your tanks and all those pressure recorders, and then we compare it to what the computer model shows us. And calibrated is, we consider plus or minus 5% of those values. And so once we feel good about that, we, you know, our tanks are tracking in the computer model, the same as they tracked in the field for that day, we, that's a calibrated hydraulic model, and then we can run what we call extended period simulations for three days, five days, seven days. And so what you're saying, and this is a good example, is here comes a development, and they're telling you they're going to have 300 homes, mixed-use development, commercial on the front end, 300 homes on the back end, and this was kind of the example here, and so most of the time, you're not going to get a demand. They're going to tell you how many lots they're going to develop, how much square footage. So there's some book value and some engineering judgment that goes into calculating that demand. We can put that demand on your system and run it and see how the system reacts. So do you have low pressure? Do your, does this tank drop? Does this pump run 23 hours a day, which, as you can imagine, is too much. You want those pumps to cycle on and off, and this is a, an example of exactly that that you're looking at here in another, a client of ours, we just finished our hydraulic model, developer calls, we calculated that the first phase was half a million gallons a day, future was going to be a million gallons a day. So this is a centralized system, and so their plant is on the south side, and this was at the far north side of their system. So as you can imagine, getting that water from south to north could be problematic. They wanted to know what they needed to do to either hold this development off or, you know, the improvements they had to make. What's important here is this letter and this evaluation took about a day to turn around and give to them.
What's the season though? When you do this model, are you doing several models? Model one, model two, model three, different period times, different period days, different period seasons?
Yes, that's a great question. So what we, what we look at and what we develop for an area like Fairhope with high irrigation, we like to do them in the summer because we can see that. And so you have these curves that you look at when the, when demand spikes during an hourly period over a 24-hour period. That's called a diurnal curve, fancy word, but we've developed one for irrigation.
Diurnal, yeah. Got you.
And so we've had to do that, and your issue with irrigation and demands is not unlike what other areas with very similar demographics see. And so we look at an average day demand and a peak day demand, and then we can, once we get those, we can look at a future demand. We can just, you know, we can blanket another 2 NGD over the system.
Got it.
So yes, to answer your question, we look at it different demands in different periods. So yes, to answer your question, we look at it different demands in different periods. Here's just an example of troubleshooting. Top left, these are nodes that would be in the hydraulic model. And so we can set a pressure and a pressure minimum. And if it gets below that, it'll tell us, we call it a heat map. But for example, this is an area of low pressure in the system. And the reason that is, is up on a mountain and they have a, they have to have a booster station to pump up there. And they wanted to know if they could take the booster station out of service. And to answer their question, they could. So and and the red line here is high velocity. So that would indicate two things, the line's too small, so you're trying to push more water out of a smaller pipe. So what you would look at is we need a bigger line or we need to, we need to reinforce that area from another direction, if you will. So just a couple of examples of what the the hydraulic computer model can do. So let's talk a little bit about Fairhope. This is historical water demands going back to 2014. The bottom line here is your average day demand, the top line is your peak day demand. If you look at your, the the dash line on there, the red dash line, that's your existing treatment capacity, as I said earlier, of eight and a half MGD. And your raw water capacity of 11. To point out the average peaking factor between those, so the the multiplier between average day and peak day is about 1.6. Between 1.6 and 1.8 is what I, what we would expect to see for an area like Fairhope. And this area under the, that shaded here would be when those, when the, I guess, demands were higher than eight and a half MGD. Great question would be, how could that happen? And so as your, your tanks are falling during those days. And so when your pumps are sized to pump to the the fullest tank. So when tanks go get lower, your how, your your pumps can pump more flow because they have less head to pump against or less pressure. And when you look at this, and like I said, you've got five treatment facilities, that difference is 300 or 400 gallons per minute. And so what's important or what we think has happened since 2018 is that that curve is probably rounded off a little bit. Meaning if you could produce more water, that would be a little bit steeper. Again, the approximate growth there is 5% per year, if you look at the the peak day line, which is what we have to plan on.
So Caleb, this basically shows that they're pumping all they can out of the wells. And they're maxed out. And so that extra little bit that you need is coming just out of the storage in your tanks, that's all that's left.
Yeah, you're.
It means your wells are doing everything they can just to.
To meet volume.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
And so it, what, and what it also almost certainly means is that if you had more water available to pump out of the wells to treat it and push it into the system, that you would be, people would be using, you would be selling more water. In other words, it's, it's been buffered, it's been. What's the word? Been limited.
We've met our capacity, our ceiling right now.
That's right.
Yeah.
Talk a little bit about projected water demand. So now we're looking in the future based on the information I just gave you. So what we're trying to create here is an envelope, if you will. So the 5% growth being the top line, which is your demand growth since 2014. The 3% is roughly the population growth since, I think, 1994 of the city. And we also put a 2% line on there because we always get this question, and it's a great question. At some point, you know, that's gonna kind of flatten out your your growth.
Sometime.
And we've looked at this for in the 50 years in the future, but this is a 20-year look ahead.
Some point.
We talk about, so move into, talk about a little short-term planning period, that zero to five. And so I've added a line on here, we've added a line that talks about the 2024 treatment capacity when we get that 3.6 out of water plant number three. And as you can see, if we go back to 2024, that puts us in that envelope for demands. When we get to the last slide, we'll talk a little bit about some things we think we could do to get more water by 2024. There's a couple of projects, one being another, we talked about it already, another well at water plant three.
A quick, quick question for you.
Yes.
On the growth, demand, or I should say, demand growth, is that just a linear based on population growth? You know, if you look at electrical demand, there's a lot of efficiencies, LED lights and things like that. And so the curve's been flattened a little bit, even though the population goes up.
Right.
With water, maybe not as much, you got low-flow shower heads, you got, you know, lower-volume toilets, which, but if you turn on a sprinkler system, it may just be peanuts compared to what you say flushing the toilet. So are there any efficiencies built into these curves or are they just strictly tied to population?
They're strictly tied to population and growth.
So.
These are hard.
Excellent point. We've, Georgia is, I think, ahead of Alabama in terms of looking at this, probably because of the water wars and the lawsuits. And we've looked, gosh, for the last 10 or 15 years, we've looked at various scenarios for places in Georgia where these exact things are being looked at, almost exactly what you're saying. And the state of Georgia has basically imposed per capita water usage limits. And Arizona, I'm sure they know something about this, right? Where they tried to bend that curve, or the way you're looking at it, bend and flatten it out, right? And I think that was in self-defense in a way, to try to be able to tell the judge and the lawsuits, hey, look, we're we're being good water stewards, right? In Alabama, we really haven't had to do that. We're so blessed with water, we're spoiled, quite frankly. And so we're still not, in the high-growth areas in Alabama, we're not really seeing that from the state yet. Where you go basically ask for water, if you can, you know, find an engineer to show that, hey, they have the water, it's not gonna, you know, harm the environment. Aiden says fine. They don't do that in Georgia. In Georgia, they limit you, they make you look hard at population growth, hard at per capita water uses and justify your, in your case, your your permanent to getting new well, okay? That's, I mean, I can't help but think that's coming in Alabama. Who knows when?
That's something that I, that I wanted to piggyback, and I was gonna ask this question, so it's no better time than now. Should we be that vain? When we look at the the patterns, I did anesthesia for many years and it's all about patterns. When we look at the patterns of what's happening around the nation, around the world with our water, should we be that vain? And I've talked to these guys about it before, in thinking that, hey, we got all the water in the world, you know? So in this plan, are we not thinking worst-case scenario? And 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 put in that scenario of what it looks like in the rest of the country, like California and Arizona and Georgia and other places? Can we not do something for our great grands to make sure that we're not sitting here with our, with our head in the sky, thinking that, oh, we got all the water in the world? When we know that it's coming, to where we are not gonna have all the water in the world, let's just put it on the table?
Yeah, I think, I I would agree with that stance and that statement, yes, we need to do something. And we're, and we brainstormed with with Jason and, you know, and Mark and I about, you know, because you have such high irrigation, reuse. And that's a, and and that's new in Alabama because we are spoiled.
They don't have reuse regulations.
They don't, but I've been screaming it. And I'm a, I'm a novice, but it's logic to me, but thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, so it's something we're talking about. And I would, I would venture to say, you know, we would have to approach Aiden with a plan.
So and to build on that, Caleb alluded to it. So so we show this envelope, the way you you all are looking at it, we show this envelope on purpose, right? Because inevitably, if you take a group of people, there are a few people that think you're gonna hit the high growth. There are a few people that think it's gonna bend or it should bend, and there are a few people in between, right? It's our purpose isn't to try to tell you, we know what it's gonna be, we don't, we really don't. What our suggestion is, is that you plan for the worst, right? And then you decide shorter term what you're gonna budget and implement now. And some of this does become a political question.
No doubt.
What do you all want to do? I will say, you know, the example that Caleb gave was for Madison Utilities up in North Alabama. And when we first began working there in 2007, they were telling us, we have this one water treatment plant, we have wells, we're boxed in by Huntsville and a few other folks. We're not gonna grow past, I think it was 12 MGD.
That's funny, my brother lives in Madison.
We've been designing improvements ever since, and what are the current water treatment plant expansion is gonna get them to what?
18.
18.
Okay.
And here's the other, so they went to the Tennessee River, right? They just said, we can't continue, they had trouble continuing to grow and find the wells that they needed. And so they went to the Tennessee River, and as we told them at the time, you're getting one of the last parking spots on the river to pull water out, you're in the driver's seat. And it wasn't that they didn't believe us, but it was still, I mean, that was seven, eight years ago. It was a little hard to see, well, fast forward to the day, their neighbors to the north are begging them to make improvements and to sell water wholesale. So the point being, we didn't try to predict exactly what their demands were gonna be. But we did tell them, we begged them, don't box yourselves in, plan for the worst, plan for the future. So that, and unfortunately, they've had to do some of this, just because decisions that were made prior to us getting involved. They've had to go back and spend money that they really shouldn't have had to spend. And and so it, you know, planning for that 20-year-plus horizon, worst case, will help somebody down the road. Whether it materializes and when, who knows?
Thank you.
Yes.
So looking at the the short term here, the zero to five, that that box goes out to year 2028. It's hard to believe, we're assuming we're already, we are at 2023 now. And so we're showing that 2024 total treatment capacity when water tra, treatment plant number three is completed. We'll talk a little bit about their, the additional well at water treatment plant three. And discussing with a hydrogeologist, we think there's some, there's another well at water treatment plant one. So the goal is, is hopefully to get more buffer in that zero to five-year range as part of some additional planning. This next slide looks at 10 years out. And I'll point this out, so if you look at 13 to 16 MGD, again, worst-case scenario there, it's really kind of industry standard to to have a 1.2 multiplier over your peak demand, so 80%. Point this out, you currently have 10 wells that produce 11 MGD. We'll just use round numbers, that's a little over a million gallons a day per well. You've got some that are 1,000, a little bit more, some that are 600. When you start looking at this 10-year period and the number of additional wells that need to be developed to meet, say, that envelope there, it it could be, you gotta start planning for it now, you gotta start looking for sites, you know, you own a bunch of property at water treatment plant number three. But we got, the hydrogeologists, I think there's some areas that's been identified in the past, but things we need to start looking at, the city needs to start looking at. So what's next? Again, just to rehash what I said, develop an additional well, review, do some preliminary engineering on that. Additional well at water treatment plant number three, the hydraulic model we discussed. I think it's important, we talk about what the, what we can do with that as far as new development and troubleshooting. But also with a decentralized system, it it's harder to move water because you have smaller pipes. It's harder to move water around the system. So say in South Fairhope, where demands are not as high right now, but you need that water on the north side, that'll tell us, that'll help us move water around and know those improvements that that are needed to, say, move a little more water to the north and a little less to the south. Again, use model of the piping improvements. The other thing is well number four, I think everyone's aware, there was a PFAS concern there, there was a hit. And so there's a deeper test well already there, looking at doing some testing there just to see, do water quality sampling to see if we can get out that deeper aquifers out of the PFAS to remove that concern.
Do we need to be, I mean, those, those, those are big concerns of mine. What happens if, you know, these things are moving underground, you know? They make, they get in an aquifer and all of a sudden, one, you didn't have any measurable PFAS concerns? Next year, boom, out of nowhere, two and a half million gallons, can't use it.
Right.
So.
I mean, I.
That's a hypothetical now.
Absolutely, and I, I mean, I think every water system in the state is currently in that same position, even with no hits.
In the nation.
Yeah, in the nation, that's exactly right.
Put that out there.
So we're, I mean, everyone is worried about it. And we were told that Aiden is gonna release, I'm sorry, the EPA is gonna release a draft MCL, you know, contaminant level for some of the PFAS compounds as soon as this month. Whether that'll happen, who knows? But it does sound like it's a priority for EPA that they're gonna release it. And I think what we're telling people, we have one or two clients who were saying, okay, tell us what to do, we're ready to, you know. We're saying, don't do anything yet, don't spend money until there's some clarity about what the reg is. It could be, depending on the compound and depending on the situation, that you're below the reg and you don't have to do much of anything. Or it could be, we're, I know we're piloting, as a matter of fact, just before we walked in here, we were finalizing some plans to pilot three or four different filter media in pressure filters, which you see in a lot of wells anyway, maybe for other things, but putting filter media in to remove PFAS, just for that reason. The whole question of centralized treatment versus decentralized treatment, you know, one treatment facility or two or three or 10, when you start having to put more treatment in, it's significantly more expensive to do it at multiple sites than it is just to do it in one or two, maybe three sites. And so that's why that was mentioned. And so that's something you'll wanna look at carefully, is, okay, what's required? And can, where and how do we have to provide additional treatment? And how can we centralize that and save money? So I, you know, we're talking parts per trillion. Most things in drinking water are measured in parts per million. And so it's a new world, even for those of us that do it every day.
As the instruments get more and more sensitive, they're gonna lower that threshold just because they feel like they have to.
Well, yes, sir, and and so, you know, one of the, one of the things that bothers us the most is, so right now, depending on who you ask, let's say the instruments can test down to five parts per trillion. Well, depending on where they set the reg, you may say, okay, we'll put some pressure filters with granular activated carbon in, and we'll take it out and it'll show it is non-detectable, we're good to go, right? Well, a few years from now, if the instruments catch up, maybe we're not good to go. Maybe, you know, maybe we thought, just because we were not detected, it was zero, but it really wasn't. So again, we think it's important, we think EPA is probably looking at that when making the reg, when setting the reg, to just, everybody be patient. And before spending a lot of money and and heading off in a direction, be sure that, you know, you understand the reg and the testing. And in your case, you know, while you might make plans for what you would do if it showed up in multiple wells, you know, it sounds like initially, it may only be showing up in one well. And so that that would, that would be, in the, in relative terms, goodness.
So is there a, is there a filtration system that would alleviate the PFAS if we were to instrument that or include that in the instrumentation in our system?
Yes, sir, so.
Okay.
Well, so there are, generally speaking, there's sort of two levels of treatment for it, okay? One is just a a pressure filter that has either granular activated carbon in it or an ion exchange resin is another technology. Or there is a patented material called Florsoar, which, quite frankly, I think is some sort of clay that they mine out of the ground. But it's new, it's it's very new. So we're about to pilot it in North Alabama. So those are three general ways to filter it out with just a relatively basic pressure filter, okay? The more expensive way is reverse osmosis filtration. But with reverse osmosis, it takes everything out, you could go get water from the bay. And it takes, it turns saltwater to freshwater, right, it's what they use on shits, right? But it's extremely expensive. And so, you know, the fear is that if EPA sets the regs low enough and the testing catches up, then a lot of utilities. Then a lot of utilities may have to consider reverse osmosis, and it is, it is very expensive.
That's a part of the standard operation.
Yes, sir. What we're hoping and, and what it seems so far, for most systems, that they should be able to do some sort of pressure filtration. And get that media, pilot testing and get the media that's appropriate for your water. And it's not cheap, but it's manageable, I guess is the way I would describe it. But we won't know until, unless and until they, they set the actual M C L for P F O S, we won't know. One more thing to keep in mind is there are thousands of P F O S compounds, right? There are just a few that are currently covered by the health advisory and that will be covered by this first M C L. There are, I forget how many more, but there's a handful more that are being tested and monitored as part of some ongoing testing requirements that E P A is gonna implement. I don't know when that kicks in, but it's soon. And so they'll spend a few years studying those and those results. That could, you know, the same technology may remove those, but again, there's just one more unknown there.
Yeah, very good.
It's a complicated thing to talk about, but I, I think once the reg comes out, you'll be in a better position to know. You may have to do a little more testing, but you'll be in a better position to know, you know, what you need to spend in the budget to get rid of it.
Again, we've talked about the five to ten year plan, prioritize the improvements, summarize master plan report. And we got on here, you know, rate study to ensure sufficient funds. Would be one of those things, once you had your capital improvements project planned for ten years, you can, you can start backing into that. With a rate study consultant, if you so choose to. So any other questions, comments?
Counsel. Any additional questions at this point?
Very good.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That was really good.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it. All right, counsel, next on the work session is committee updates, Councilmember Burrell.
I don't have any committee updates.
Councilman Martin?
No, I don't have any committee updates.
I, I do not have any committee updates either.
I'll finish, finish up with none myself, so we'll move right on in. Department head updates. Don't be shy, we'll start over here, Kim. We'll go ahead and address any agenda items you guys, since we got time now.
I just wanted to update, I had a, a team's meeting with our current bank, which is P N C, which P N C, you know, purchased V D V A. So there's been some transition that, that has gone on. But anyway, we, we went through all our accounts and I questioned interest rates, as interest rates are increasing. So starting in January, on our operating accounts, we're gonna get paid two point six five percent. And we're locking in our fees for three years. So Jimmy, if you think that's a good deal, nod your head. As the rates go up, that interest rate will go up. And currently in our reserves that we put out for a bid, our reserves right now is, is getting paid at three point two five percent. Again, as the federal reserves go up, those rates will go up. So I just wanted to update y'all of, you know, what's going on with the, all the funds we have, so if you have any questions.
It's a lot of extra interest every year. Have you run the math, just to, have you run just some rough math?
Don't tell public works.
I have, I have not this week, I mean, we had this conference call last week, I was gonna update y'all before commit. For them, but I, I did think the, setting the fees for three years, not increasing the fees, which was, I thought that was a pretty good deal on it. And it was, it was trying to decide, do we put it out for bid? The city is on the operating accounts. When I came to work here three years ago, I was informed that the city's money has been in that location of the bank in, on Section Street since the nineteen fifties. And I just know the bank has been sold many times, but they, you know, the bankers at that time wanted to inform me that that relationship has been there for many, many years. But now I'm dealing with nobody in Fairhope, I'm dealing with somebody in Birmingham. So we really don't have the local person currently anymore, so.
Is that, that with B B V A, is that what you're speaking of?
Yes, but now it's P N, P N C bought them out, and so.
Lost contact, yeah.
Yes, so they make it where their contact is in Birmingham for the government accounts.
Kim, you got any agenda items?
No.
Thank you. Chief?
Hi, sir.
Page?
First, I want to say thank y'all. Probably hear me, oh, there we go. Thank y'all for the, the luncheon on Friday, I thought it went really well and I think everybody enjoyed it. So thank y'all for, for continuing to acknowledge us every Christmas week. I know everybody was very complimentary of, of Friday afternoon, so. We are rescheduling the movie in the street on Sunday, this Sunday, and then our Parks and Rec department, I don't know if Pat's here, but they're gonna have the movie in the stadium on Friday night. That's their second annual, they're gonna be playing the Polar Express, so y'all come out for that. I know we will have Santa there, some inflatables.
This Friday.
This Friday, at the stadium, yes.
And then Sunday?
Sunday, in the street, we'll be playing The Grinch at six thirty. So that was rescheduled from the Saturday voluntary lighting. And then, I don't know if Richard will touch on this, but we kicked off the Arts Alleyway project. I know, I feel like we're breaking record here, but truly, we, we really did, Richard, come back me up. We, we really did kick off the Arts Alleyway project last Monday. So we are meeting weekly with the contractor, all the utility representatives from Fairhope. And so it'll be in four phases, and so we'll keep y'all in the loop as we continue to make progress over there. But we do have a circulation plan for traffic in and out of the parking deck. So it's gonna be a great improvement, and we just wanna continue to communicate to y'all what's going on there. Right now, it'll just be that north side of the parking lot, behind the Remax building. Right there is where they're gonna be mobilizing and, and doing a little bit of groundwork over there. So we are, that's part of phase one. And then we'll have phase two, which will be behind Little Whiskey. And then phase three and four will be along the backside of the alley. And then that unloading, last phase will be that unloading area and that. Area right outside of the Hampton Inn, so.
What was that giant heron gonna go up down by Church Street, that's what I wanna see.
Oh, the Bruce Larson?
Yeah.
The artwork.
It's a seahorse, I believe, is it?
Seahorse.
Seahorse.
Yeah, seahorse.
Was it a seahorse?
Yeah.
I think it was a great big heron, it was like head going over the top.
That's close, but a seahorse, yeah.
No, no, it's not close.
Try to be, no, you're trying to be nice. Trying to be nice.
So, but anyways, I think that's all I have, but, but again, we'll be updating y'all as that project kind of unfolds, so, thank y'all.
Thank you, Paige.
Thanks, Paige.
Court?
Yes, sir.
Oh, other court.
Killing me.
Hey, I just wanted to update you guys on the biometric screening that happened on the first. We had a lot of employees show up, it went really, really well. We haven't gotten our final numbers back yet, we won't get those until after the first of the year. But was happy with the symbol clinic and happy with the staff that was there, they seemed to did a good job.
Is it too late to get one of those?
No, sir.
What day should I come?
Any day that you have time and they have an opening.
Okay.
Or you can go to your personal doctor as well.
Let, let me speak to the council and the, you might, you all may have done your screening, but it was.
I did not.
Super simple, it was super quick, they did a great job in and out. And got a lot of good data, and I just wanna encourage everybody to, to go get their screening done. I mean, it's, it's, it's for everybody's wellbeing. I got great data. My blood pressure, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta work with Jimmy Conyers, my blood pressure's through the roof.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. All the way to back?
Jeremy or Wesley or Conrad or?
You can't come to a council meeting with a fluorescent vest on.
I didn't even see the vest.
How are y'all this evening?
Doing good.
Number thirteen is ours. As far as a barn, we're gonna build out our courtyard at Young Street, it's a fifty by a hundred. We budgeted a hundred fifty-five thousand for this, we had six bidders. The winning bid with the Southern Steel, they came in at one oh two, six fifty-nine.
Man.
That leaves us right a little over fifty-two thousand to do the foundation, the lighting, and the slag to go around the building once completed.
Think that's, think that's gonna be enough?
Oh, yeah.
All right, good.
We were surprised, like I said, Richard did a lot of the figures for us, and wouldn't you think we'd get the whole thing built for that cheap?
Hold, hold on, you, so you're gonna take the savings and, and, and do it on something else, was that another budget?
Part of, part of the same building.
Part of this, once we get the, the bid for the building, everything done, then they're gonna send us the foundation plan, then we have to pour the concrete. And then we're gonna do the lighting and the rock to go around the building.
All for one oh two.
Six fifty-nine.
All for one oh two, sixty-nine.
The building for one oh two.
The building itself is gonna be one oh two.
So they gotta do all the other stuff for fifty-three?
They're gonna leave us a little over fifty-two thousand to finish up the project with the foundation, the lighting, and the rocks to go around the building.
Still thinking the total cost is gonna be less than the one fifty.
Yes, Richard, Richard figured around twenty-five to thirty thousand for the concrete.
So we're still looking, still thinking about a twenty thousand dollar savings.
Yes, sir.
So we haven't seen that part yet?
No, sir.
I got you, but you're telling us it's coming.
Yes, sir.
I got you.
So is that a budgeted project as well?
Yes, sir, we budgeted one fifty-five for it.
Well, I, I mean, you budgeted one fifty-five and you're one oh two.
We still have to add.
I'm not seeing the savings still, I'm not seeing.
Well, so it's one fifty for the whole project, is what they budgeted. The building is one oh two, the foundation's gonna be twenty-five, so there's gonna be about twenty-five.
Be about twenty-five, that's what I'm trying.
Yes, sir.
Still gotta do electric and, and the rock around that.
Yeah, cause the budget project's not just a building.
It's everything.
It's the whole.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Chair, Richard, Jeremy, Richard, you're standing up.
Not to confuse on the former issue, when, when they came to us and we did the budget, I, I, we really thought the building itself erected should be one twenty-five. And we had thirty thousand dollars for the foundation and the, the electrical. The good news is, the building came in at one oh two, so that's where we, we expect the savings to be.
We, we set that back for a rebid, right, at one point, because we thought it was too much?
No.
Or something like that, am I mistaken?
And I understand the reason why we can't tell you, that, you know, we'd love to have built the foundation, have, have the foundation already built. Part of the metal building packages bid is they do the engineering, because they're designing the building, so they gotta tell us what kind of foundation connection there is. So as soon as y'all award this, then they will send us the foundation design and we'll get that, that bill. So that's just part of the wind code and all that, so. And I just got a couple of things report, everybody's still in thunder, Arts Alley, you already heard that. Gayfer Avenue, they've got temporary, they got the construction signage up, they're dropping off barricades, we're hoping to see activity on that. Out at Gayfer Road and U S ninety-eight. And we did have our kickoff meeting for our tap grant for, for sidewalks on Fairwood and Blue Island. You will send, see the funding agreement at our next meeting, and hopefully the engineering, uh, uh, not to exceed probably the first meeting in January, so we can get that project moving forward. And I really only have one item on the agenda, the fire extinguisher bid is gonna be pulled. We had a little confusion between purchasing and, and fire maintenance, so you'll probably see that next meeting. But I can discuss the roll-up doors, which are budgeted for the fire station, and they did come in under the budgeted amount. And that project's been on the books for about three years and it's finally come to fruition, so. Any questions?
No, but you took, took all my fun out of asking you about the fire extinguisher inspection, and I do see it in there, I thought, how many? There's, there's a lot more fire extinguishers than I, than I thought.
And, and just not to get too deep into it, but here, here's the challenge. In the good old days, we could do informal bids, but last year, the total cost of the inspection services and update, and this, this covers the exhaust system on hoods like back in these kitchens. It includes every fire extinguisher that we have of every size and type. The cumulative cost of that last year exceeded fifteen thousand, which triggers a different requirement in procuring those services. So we did bid those services, but there is a little bit of confusion, because normally what would happen, we'd get a singular bill in, and then it would be divvied out to each department. If, if, if three thousand dollars of that bill was water and sewer for their fire extinguishers, then they would cut a P O for it. Well, we gotta do business different, so we're working with Kim and our fire maintenance to get that cleaned up a little bit. So we'll hopefully have it back to you next meeting to move forward.
Well, you're, 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 you know, when you read this, like I did, and you think it's simply a fire extinguisher inspection. And you see fifteen thousand, you think, my God, how much is that gonna be per extinguisher? And now, this, even though we're removing it, you, you see the bid tabulation, and you see that just for your typical putting a tag on a fire extinguisher. Someone bid four dollars, seven dollars, very reasonable, it's, it's the other types of inspections that.
Yep.
Doesn't come across when you just say fire extinguisher inspection.
For example, if your fire extinguisher reaches twelve years of age, it has to be taken and be static tested and recertified and everything else. That's, there's a line item on that, if it's six years old, it requires a different inspection. If it's a hood system, there are certain parts that after it gets a certain age, it has to be replaced. So that's why you have all those different services, and we never know what the cost is until they go through the whole city and, and, and figure out what has to be done, so, thank you.
Richard, you just wanna just, since you're standing up here, the bay, the bay doors for the fire department bid at sixty, or the budget was sixty thousand, they came in at fifty-eight and change?
That is correct.
That's fourteen.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Chairman?
So a quick update on the gas department, something y'all can be proud of. But this week at the P S C conference, we were, presented the gas system of the year for the state of Alabama. So for all the improvements, for the mayor's vision, y'all's vision, the improvements we've made, the rectifiers we've installed. So it was nice, it's the first year that the P S C has awarded a gas system of the year. Not saying we're the best, but because of the improvements and stuff we've done, we were awarded the gas system of the year.
That's awesome, congratulations.
Testament to the twenty employees we have right now, they're working their tails off, and then obviously y'all, the mayor, the vision for the gas department, so.
That's awesome, that is.
They did not have a plaque for us yet, so they are actually working on the plaque and everything, and send it to us and they get it finished.
So we're gonna tell people it doesn't mean we are the best, though, so you might not tell them that.
Not the best.
We're climbing.
But we, a hundred and, right at a hundred and sixty something gas systems in the state of Alabama. So, and we were the, you know, gas system of the year.
That's great.
So still a lot of work to do, but moving in the right direction.
Moving in the right direction, awesome.
Congratulations, Jeremy.
Agenda item sixteen?
Yes.
So the sixteen thousand dollars a couple of weeks ago that I was bragging about saving? We're gonna need to tap into that a little bit. There is a, this truck is over budget. We, there's a little backstory behind it, but a P O was issued for this truck last December. The truck was what we thought was on the lot to purchase from Stivers. They made it appear that the truck was on the lot. It wasn't the truck that we wanted, but it's a truck that they had on the lot. Once we issued the P O, we realized that the truck was not on the lot, it was in the allotment of trucks for Ford to build. So while we were doing the budget, we reached out to Stivers several times, hey, we're doing the budget, is this truck going to show up? They ensured us, hey, you will get this truck for this price. So first part of November, I reached out to Stivers, hey, where's our truck? Oh, by the way, Ford is not building twenty twenty-two trucks anymore, they're building twenty twenty-threes, you can no longer get that truck. So that's why the price is so different in the budget. Being that they're building twenty twenty-threes, we did order the, not having ordered with your approval, we'll order the truck we want, not the truck that we thought was on the lot. So if that had been the case, we would have had the correct number in the budget, but we rolled over the, the number that they told us to roll over. Cause they ensured us that we would get this truck this year, which we're not getting.
So I guess I'm.
So it's kind of like a.
I mean, is this a miscommunication, or is this sort of more of a bait and switch? Cause it was a bait and switch, do we wanna buy from them?
I think they knew what they were doing, they told us it was on the lot, in the lot, right? They made it appear that the truck was sitting there.
So we're giving them a favored status of being on the state bid list, so what state entity can you file a complaint with for trying to use? state entity can you file a complaint with for trying to use, you know, language that might mislead a municipality?
And not to pick on Stivers, but there's been issues, you know, and they're the only.
I don't want to pick on them, I mean, I appreciate it.
Right.
State bid, but they're getting a lot of business because people are depending on that, and we didn't get it. And now, not only do we not have a vehicle, they're costing us more money.
So.
They're playing games, the state needs to know it.
A PO issued for almost eleven months for that vehicle that they assured that we, even when we were doing the budget.
Did you buy it from somewhere else, or do you have to buy it from them?
So this year, Ford, Stivers won the Ford contract for the state. Chevy and Ram, Dodge, they didn't do a state bid. So you can't buy a Dodge or a Chevy off the state bid this year. It has to be a Ford. And the hard part doing the bid, you kind of got to find the truck first. Trucks are so hard to get, you know, you kind of got to find the truck, and then get people to put it out for bid, and hopefully they hold it for you.
So Jeremy, when you detailed the truck, you detailed this exact truck, and they told you they had it? I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
So we reached out to Stivers to find out what they had.
Right.
They said they had this extended cab, two fifty, in the lot, on the lot.
It wasn't exactly what we needed.
Right.
But it was something they had, so we were willing to take it because they had it on hand.
Correct. So that's why we issued the PO. Once y'all approved it, we came to y'all, said, hey, back last December, this truck is on the lot, Stivers has it, y'all approved the purchase of the truck. We sent them the PO to come to find out that the truck was in the allotment of trucks to be built by Ford, not actually sitting on the, you know, Jason's had the same problem with Stivers too, making it appear that trucks are on the lot, but they're in the allotment. They ordered the truck, so it was just sitting there as a number, waiting for Ford to build, and then they never made it to that number.
They were banking on the fact that Ford was going to build the truck in time to get it to you.
To get it on their lot, and then they could get it from the lot, but it didn't.
So, you know.
So they kind of planned, yeah, they playing games.
We will get the truck we want, not the truck, but, I mean, we would have been happy with this truck, right? I mean, but they did make it appear. So that's why the number is different than what, it's so much different.
Well, Jeremy, thank you. Appreciate it.
That's why I had to bait you on my sixteen thousand dollars in savings a couple of weeks ago.
Hey, look, man, you came in really hot today, you know, this congratulations or celebration, and then, you know, no, we get it. It happens. Thank you, Jeremy. Appreciate it.
Lead with good news.
Jason, anything? Pat? Conrad, you already been up here.
About the power lines?
We have, we have one other thing on there for electric.
Power lines, right.
Right. It's on number twelve. It's the underground line on Magnolia with Highline. We have that estimated at about a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar project is what we estimate it as. We don't know that that's what it's going to come in as, but we have, we're looking at about a ten percent of that amount for the engineering cost. That's what we're looking at right now, so that's, that's what that project is.
And the memorandum?
The number eleven, that's, we could, oh, I can talk about that, that's fine. Number ten, who's going to talk about number ten real quick? I'll get you, Hunter, I'm sorry.
The MOU. Chief here? He was out, he was standing right there earlier, I think.
Yeah, well, if he can hear me. Lieutenant Hamrick, if you can hear me, please report to the council chambers. Can you, all right, go ahead, Marcus.
This was, this was an issue Chief asked me about a while back. It's our special response team. We think there's a need to have special trained forces that are within, you know, embedded within each individual department. We need more. And here, here, or in Spanish for it, that we have a memorandum of understanding that they would be able to come in and assist us if needed, is all it is. It allows them to come in to our jurisdiction with the approval of council, same way if we go up there, we have to send a team up there to respond. I believe it has to do with SWAT activities more or less.
Tactical.
So is there, are we, I mean, are we having to spend, spend anything for this, or is this just us allowing them to help us and us going to help them when, when the need arises?
These officers going to have to be outfitted with certain equipment?
And there's, there's different training that they have to do, but not, I mean, it's not any additional splits that we have any other, um, we get trained, and this is something we've done, I think, for probably a while now.
Right.
We do it every year.
Okay.
Maybe it sounded different. It sounded different, didn't it, Jason?
Yeah, well, I just want to make sure I'm not misunderstanding what it is or overlooking something. Champagne, library, all right, Hunter.
So five and six are second readings. I don't know if y'all have any questions on those two. We saw last, item nine is a new site plan review of Starbucks. If y'all want to go over it in our last ten minutes, or just cover that in the agenda. It's not a public hearing, so.
No, go ahead. We got ten minutes, might as well take advantage of it.
Well, I'm gonna, John, I'm gonna move through here. Is this the same slideshow, or?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so just real quick, little bit, this went to planning commission, so, so what we see here is a site plan, and I'm going to get to actually talking about that, the site plan, but just show you the process, so we don't have to go over that. Buildings, everything was reviewed during the planning commission meeting, including the landscape strip, twenty-foot buffer, removing asphalt, putting that in. Parking, everything was, was reviewed and looked at in detail, how sidewalks, pedestrian connectivity, even signs, and everything that we typically look at within a site plan review. Then we got to the recommendation from the planning commission. Went through four, pretty standard, just making sure that, that things are done correctly. There is a shared parking agreement. But the planning commission did make one, one final recommendation, and that was that the staff will work with, the applicant will work with the staff to add more landscape features. So to back up and probably where I should have started, I assume we kind of know where we're talking about here, but it's Eastern Shore Shopping Center. This was not just for the internal Starbucks site, it was for the whole shopping center. As you can see, it's probably one of our oldest, not too much landscape, striping, you know, there was quite a, a good bit to look at there within the, the site. There is a challenge there to make parking work, to add landscaping and make any codes. You can't quite do, do it all, so there, there was a, working with the applicant, we, we got down to some of the landscape islands that were going to be needed, and it just so happened, by the time we were getting ready to come to council, the Starbucks, actually if corporate, decided to change one of their layouts. So instead of having double lanes, they went to a single lane. So they had to kind of go back to the drawing board with the plan in front of you. So we've looked at that. There is a restriping plan, their internal landscape plans, but you know, they have agreed to add some islands, do a restriping plan, crosswalks to make that a safer pedestrian experience and more attractive, even in the property outside the actual, where the Starbucks is being built.
One of the things, Hunter, not to, was, we were speaking on kind of reducing some of that concrete jungle to pervious, decreasing the runoff, that that's a part of this as well.
Well, so what you see on the screen here is the overall parking lot. This project is only concerned with the lot created in the dash line, but because it sits in and there is shared parking, we do have a little bit of, say, so, so within that triangle, they're bringing it all up to code. The, the twenty-foot of asphalt's being pulled out along the frontage, that's being a landscape plan, a buffer is being put in, and then, of course, the tree islands within the rest of the parking lot. But it, it is softening it, they're handling internally, adding impervious parking. Other than the tree islands, that's not being done in the overall parking lot.
Council President, if I may, I believe in the last meeting, when we were looking at this site plan, there was a question raised about how do you prevent some, keep that one up, yep, that, that last one.
Mm-hmm.
Down in the bottom center, how would you keep traffic from turning left into, into the oncoming traffic? I mean, I think you said there's only going to be striping there, and, you know, not, we don't dwell on site plans too much, but I believe the question came up, was that going to be adequate?
Yeah, and, and great question, and we did, you know, one of the challenges here because of the delays, we kind of had a week to review this layout, you know, where we really meticulously look at the other, and I do think that's, you know, here, and kind of just step back in this area. So as you come in to this entrance, you flow, you could potentially flow in, it helps, here we go. So it helps circulation, because if you come into the parking lot now, there's nothing stopping you other than striping, so people kind of hit that parking lot and go every direction, you know, where's the quickest store. So this will help direct flow there, but I think this is where you're.
That's what I'm talking about.
We're talking about, and, and we did talk about that.
What's to keep you from taking a left and wanting to cut, you know, all the way across to, you know, just another aisle of parking on the north side of the development?
Yeah, I think, great point. We really looked at, at stacking and keeping that alfagreeno, but, but maybe that, that is something that they can put a, I think there's enough room there that could put a tree, a little planting island or something. I think visually, that's what you want people to, to look at, and looks, if, if you match this radius here, if you mirror that, I think there's plenty of room to put a small island in there.
So if you're in my chair, and you're looking at this site plan, do you recommend adding that island?
I wouldn't confirm they have enough room for it, but I think we, we can make that recommendation, and, and we'll be happy to work with them, but I think.
Would you do that during the adoption of this council? Would anybody have an issue with that? Hunter, would you have an issue with that?
Would we need to amend it for that, or because we're discussing and already.
Add a condition.
Conditional approval of the landscaping features, would that be something that would be accomplished in that?
Yes.
So there is a, you know, that, that kind of brings up a, you know, the, a lot of times our conditions are very specific, so coming out of the planning commission, it was just work with the staff to do something. You know, obviously, we get a shot at it, but, you know, you're ultimately the decision makers on what this site plan is, so I think that's the appropriate measure to, to look at landscape and circulation, everything attached this. So, you know, we can't quite engineer it during the meeting, but I think it is minor enough if you're wanting to assume the plan. If they can work with staff, we can, we can make that happen.
So one quick question, Hunter. Are they adding any islands out in these parking areas where I see all the stripes, any trees, anything?
Yes.
I know we talked about that, but I'm not really recognizing.
Yeah, so we don't have a.
A very good picture.
Good rendering here, but the, it's hard to show at this scale, as a councilman.
Yeah, this is like hand drawn.
The, these are islands being implemented, new islands being added, and two things we focused on, what does it look like from this area? Because this, this is pretty stark when you go through, and actually narrowing down some of those drive aisles, because right now, when you come in, there's four lanes of traffic that can drive through there. And then, how does it direct traffic as you're coming into the, the parking lot, you know, these, so these are added here, so it, it kind of makes people go around the islands. But you see the little hexagon, they're small scale here. Those are trees added in, there's, I believe there's two in every one except for this one to the, the south.
All right, Hunter, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wrap it up, and we're going to take a ten-minute break, and we'll come back and get the council meeting started at ten after six.
Very good. Okay, thank you.